See.
Thirty, we are going to go ahead and call this meeting to order if you would join me with the flag please.
The United States of America, true to the public for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, thank you very much. I just have everybody at the table introduce themselves for our visiting online. Joe.
I'm Joe Rebeck, I'm school board representing Alstead.
Kevin Keith, I'm school board representative Langdon.
Sarah Vogel, school board representing Atworth.
Alyssa Vasco, I'm an at-large member from Charleston.
Misty Bushy, work clerk.
Laurie Schmidt, business administrator.
And we do have many of our administrators here, I appreciate y'all being here. Our first order of business, however, is to go into a non-public or. All right, I have open for comments. I'll let you know what you should. Someone. All in favor?
All right.
Right, and we'll see you on Saturday.
Do I need my computer?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The next order of business involves the Farwell Trust and the closure of the North Charlestown Community School, which happened by a vote of the public in March of twenty twenty-four. We have with us Albert Linkair and Paul Judd, members of that. Board of Directors, so thank you for being here. We met with Matt Upton last week. To present some communication between the lawyer for the trust and Matt and us regarding moving forward. The deeds go back a long ways and it's an understanding that the deed currently says that if the building is no longer used for public education, there's, it would go back in other ways. And there may be some movement by the Farwell Trust to take it to Florida, vacated if it hasn't been done already, which they are researching. In order to help them in that process, Matt has drawn up the letter that was in your packet talking about the school board, this whole district. Saying we have no obligation, we're holding no obligation for the Farwell Trust to be a public education facility. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that, but giving them proposals moving forward without that stipulation? Anything you'd have you would like to add?
Yeah, did I see a copy of that?
Of the letter that we've written?
Yeah.
It is currently signed, but it's not approved yet, so.
Well, that's fine, I'm curious what it says.
Wait a minute. Should we read it into the minutes or should we read it into? Is it a public document?
It would be.
Okay.
I'm yes.
Is that how you're understanding?
Yeah.
You know, get ready.
Do you think it's proper or no?
This one.
Never had, I mean, okay. I'll go ahead and read it. Uh, to the Farwell Trust, signed by Joe Levesque, our school board vice chair, as I have a connection to the Farwell Trust. I will leave it to the four of you. At the twenty twenty-four annual meeting of the Fall Mountain Regional School District, the voters of the district voted to close and relinquish ownership of the North Charlestown Community School to the Farwell Trust. The Fall Mountain Regional School Board has been made aware that there may be limitations to which the property may be put in when the property is transferred back to the trust. At this end, the board discussed this matter at its meeting on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. It voted to authorize me to send this letter and state that the board has no objection to the use of the property for other purposes that would provide a public benefit, including, but not limited to, the use of the property for the operation of a privately operated childcare center and/or preschool. The board will be putting together a quick clean deed to the property soon and will be looking to transfer custody and control of the school to the trust. In anticipation of such an event, maybe it would be helpful if someone on behalf of the trust could meet with district personnel for the specific operation of the school and a plan for the orderly transfer of the custody and control of the property. Your anticipated understanding and cooperation are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the order?
So. I will abstain from the vote. All in favor?
I am.
Thank you very much. Joe has signed this letter, so I'm just trying to get over.
I think Mr. has the one, or is that the one I sent?
I do have it, yeah. All right. Thank you very much, let us know if there's anything else you need in that regard. So, that, also in regards to the, the Farwell Trust and what may potentially go into that building as referenced in that letter. In your packets, there was a letter of support for a particular program looking to bring excellent childcare training to our area. I have a copy of a newspaper article here, if anybody would like to read it, click it home for later. But I wondered, now can we read that letter into the minutes as well if you'd like? If, uh, if the board would support us supporting, or you know, a request for congressionally funded. Directed funding, sorry.
Congressional directed funding, yeah, from my, in Jeanne's office?
Yes.
I think that that's a excellent way to try and get the training that we need there to do, to do more of this. If it, I mean, I hope this goes through for the Farwell School. Um, anything that brings more childcare, it's a good thing, in my opinion.
Should you want me to read that letter in?
Well, there's one from Claremont, but there's one that we would be sending as well.
Yeah, the one from Claremont, my apologies, I had just asked for, so that I could get the correct address for Jeanne's office. And it accidentally got into the package, so I apologize, has nothing to do with us.
Oh, okay.
Well, like, because Lebanon doesn't work.
Yeah, okay, I can.
Fine.
It is for the same type of program.
Spread it out all the way.
So there's additional funding available. That's great.
Congress will accept.
Yeah, would it, and it will fit what you're trying to do. Yeah. Great.
It's an excellent opportunity for our region, especially in our school district, if they're looking to bring in training, that they can then send people out to open their own facilities or perhaps become school district employees. We had a position, we were laying center open for a long time.
Yeah, come into the pre Ks and the schools, yeah, absolutely.
So it does serve us.
They could do all fours probably when you get certified.
I don't think you need to read it, approve the letter to Jeanne.
Yes, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you, appreciate it very much. All right.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming.
About that funding, the spirit of this whole budget. We're also a different thing. All right, thank you very, very much for that. The next item on our agenda is the FY twenty-sixth budget. As we learned, the budget committee met later after a meeting on Wednesday, they were able to get to a bottom line number, they cut an additional one hundred and seventy-nine thousand ninety-nine dollars from the version two budget that we had previously discussed. And so the administrators went and had some really difficult conversations. Additional places were found. Is there anything anyone would like to discuss about, like you mentioned? Yes.
So there's no need for, I appreciate the administration coming back with these cuts, but there, there is no requirement that we cut that from the school board budget, correct? That the budget committee's budget and the school board budget can do.
It is my understanding that we can do so, I'm not, I've heard conflicting things about how we would present that to the public.
So. So when you do a warrant article, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, when you do a warrant article that goes to the DRA, which is Department of Revenue Administration, it asks you, when you have a governing body that sets your budget, that's not the school board, it asks whether or not the school board recommends the budget. And so if we don't agree with the budget as set, we say we don't recommend the budget. And so then, after you set that, so on the bottom of the warrant article, it will say, the budget committee recommends the budget, the school board does not recommend the budget. It gives you the opportunity between now and deliberative session and or voting, right? To let the public know why, okay? And then the public, according to looking at the default budget, then the public would have a clear choice, right? On either coming to the deliberative and changing it ten percent, up or down, or voting no and letting the default run. So, um, I have been told, I'm not sure if it's true, we would have to check with our attorney, because I hate to be wrong, that we could add a subsidiary warrant article if the board sort of chose for the difference. But I'm not positive how that works in an S B two.
My understanding is, because I did ask that my question, my understanding is that we have an opportunity to just let the public know within that same warrant article one, what the, what the board did recommend, but it has no weight, like the budget committee's number is the number.
When I'm entering the data into the D R A to generate our M S twenty-seven, it does ask for the board recommended number, the board not recommended, budget committee recommended, and budget committee not recommended. So our budgets don't agree, then it's going to show the difference there on the M S twenty-seven.
Yes, and that posted with the warrant.
Yeah.
So the public can see it.
So my vote would be for not amending our budget, because I would like to make that statement. But I, I think our administrators have done a fantastic job. One thing I haven't heard in this whole budget cycle was that the increase just for the CBA, right? The, uh, teachers, teachers, was four hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred forty. That was like, we expected that amount, and the increase from the administrators is only two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It's a change. So they, they've actually cut like two hundred and some odd thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from just what we would expect, and that's, I think, reflected in the default budget versus the budget that's being presented. So I would like to be able to make that case, and I think if I agree to cut this money now, that that would all get whitewashed and go away.
So then, we would not make a motion to adjust our budget tonight, we would let it be. Keeping in mind that if that's the budget that carries, then we would have a subsidiary conversation about what it looks like when it changes.
So, just, we haven't voted on a budget yet, so do we have the information of what the you've made changes? So what, we need to make a vote on?
On a number.
On a number. I kind of need to know what that number is so that I know what I'm voting.
The number that we had at the last meeting that was what we were all discussing was the version two?
Or the version, version three?
Correct. Which was with the first round, uh, first round of cuts. Is that a number that you were comfortable with, are you looking to go back to even the previous version?
Three, version three, right? Yeah.
I'm comfortable with version three, I think they did a marvelous job. I think you all cut it by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars during that cut, round the cuts.
Plus the vacancy management.
Hundred.
Yeah, well, it could, because it's about two hundred and something plus vacancy management, a hundred and sixty, so. But do we need a motion for, for approving that budget?
I think.
Is this the right time for that?
Are all in that place, Jamie, you have a thought on that?
I, I have a question when you're, when Sarah's done.
Well, her question is whether we need a motion for that today.
I think you do, because you have a budget hearing on Wednesday.
All right, then if you want to make that motion, we can open it up.
Let's have, let's figure out exactly what the number is. So I have the number, because I, I'm on the budget committee as well, and they're working on the presentation. So I have their number that I, I think is their number. But is our number the one, Lori, that is still on the default budget?
That's adjusted, the thing's been adjusted, everything's been adjusted.
So you adjusted that down based on what the budget committee told you?
Yeah. Can you remind us what the number was in article one that we were discussing last week? That would be the number that we came up with.
So our general fund budget was twenty, thirty-four million eight hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight. And then we have special funds of two million and something on top of that, bringing it to thirty-six million nine oh one six eighty-one.
Right, but the base.
The base.
Operating without special.
Yeah, that's the thirty-four, eight forty-two, nine forty-eight.
Right, and that's the difference, because the budget committees is thirty-four thou, thirty-four million six sixty-three, eight forty-nine.
Yes, well, um, I guess take your vote and then I'll answer my question.
Maybe it's relevant to ask your question.
So my question is, what's on the table? Okay, I have not actually.
That is the difference.
A bit of participant in where the two committees did not agree. So my warrant article that we put forth would still, which number is put on the budget, the budget committee numbers put there? And then it just says that the board doesn't agree, and then the data is in the M S twenty-seven.
That's it.
But, so, so the public does not have an option to vote for our budget.
Correct.
What, they vote for the budget committee's budget.
Right, right.
Unless somebody chooses to amend that at deliver.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that that was, my understanding was correct there.
So should the motion that we make be for the thirty-six million nine hundred and one dollars, the operating budget? Or should the motion we make be for the general fund budget, which is thirty-four thousand, thirty-four?
I think I'd make it for, I think I'd make it two parts. So I'll make a motion that the school board sets forth the budget for operating of thirty-four million eight hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Adding to the special revenue are the special revenue section of the budget, which is an additional two million fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-three, three dollars, totaling thirty-six million nine hundred and one thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Second.
Is there more to discuss on this? Question?
No, I'm just trying to do the math really, I, um.
You can take hand. So, so that I'm clear, this is not your vote, this will be, that you want to go on and vote about it. We'll do that on Wednesday, correct? Follow the budget here, and you will make your recommendation of what we can write about them.
Correct.
Tonight, you're just minus putting seventy-nine, oh, not, stating your position.
So this is the, this is the real difference.
That's the difference, correct, right here, right here.
Do we need to discuss any, how like the the adjustments that this administration has passed us for the?
No, I think that's, we have the.
Right, the budget committee has no bearing on where expenditures are made, only on the bottom line.
So, yeah, they didn't, the budget committee didn't come up and say.
They made suggestions, but they cannot tell you where to make adjustments, that's up to the school board and the administration. So the administration just in being prepared, right, for the discussion, went back and decided on some.
And there's the cuts that we would make if we're stuck in that number.
Correct.
And that's the number that we choose.
That's right, if that's the number that actually resides on a warrant and passes.
Oh, and that would be the number that resides, right, or I guess the budget committee could change it on Wednesday?
They could change it on Wednesday, or the deliberative session can change it.
Any other thoughts before we take a vote? Seeing none, all in favor? That motion. All right. Or is there anything else you wanted to discuss regarding the budget before you go to discuss some special articles? So I wanted to discuss article ten with the board before we get to Wednesday, because I sat with it for quite a while. Article ten is looking to appropriate fifty thousand dollars for a special non-biased organization to do extension of.
Right, yeah, got it.
But, I'm sorry, yes, interrupt, we do have another question. Which default number should be presented, should be provided to, and to present, or to whoever's presenting?
The one that is.
Based on their number.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I believe that's correct, I haven't done default budget in so long, maybe double checked, but I believe that's correct.
Okay, and that's, that's what was shared, but I will check.
Just thank God I have, I think it's all right.
So I wanted to discuss article ten before we do bring it Wednesday, and have more discussion about it. It's hard for me to wrap my brain around, because it is, it's going to be very difficult to explain to people that sometimes if you vote yes, you mean no, and if you vote no, you might mean yes. And so because there's so many different places that this can get confused, is it important to the board to make the distinction that the towns who may call for a withdrawal pay for this study? Or we simply want the warrant article to say, we are asking for fifty thousand dollars from the budget to be appropriated between all five towns of the cooperative? No, we would like it to happen.
I personally think the town that asks for the work to be done should pay for it. If didn't we get a legal opinion that that's okay?
We got an opinion that we could do it that way, but not going to have to be that way.
Okay. So, forgive me, because I wasn't paying attention when Charleston went through this. What happened on that one, it got zeroed out at deliberative, right? So we didn't get, we.
So there was no money available to appropriate from the budget for that, and so.
What would have happened?
No, I'm sorry.
What would have happened?
If it hadn't been zeroed out, what? I can't, I don't remember what, when it got zeroed out, I remember just being like, zero, what? And I got so blown away by zero, what, that I didn't think that, I can't remember what it was that, was it spread out amongst all the towns? For that amount that was in there originally, or was it that Charleston would have to pay that?
As I look back, there was nothing in that warrant article that said it would be paid for by Charleston's probation.
So, question. Kind of a double-edged sword, right? Because if you put that in, there'll be a lot of people there who are not gonna. So if we put it in that everybody gets to pay for it, I can see it going to zero. Which then kind of screws the administration on having to do all that work that nobody has time to deal with.
Exactly.
Right? Yet, if we put it in that Walpole has to pay for it, I can still see that going to zero. Okay, so either way, I can see it going to zero. I am a Walpole taxpayer, and I personally feel that the town that wants to divorce should pay for it. That's my personal opinion, you know? Like, when I wanted a divorce, I paid for it.
And I want to be clear, it's my understanding that there is two towns with articles studying for all.
Oh, I didn't realize that was the second one.
One did.
Oh. So. You're gonna go marry Walpole?
If, if it doesn't pass in either of those towns, then it will still be only on the towns that do pass such an article. So there's so many factors.
Yeah, it's a mess.
So.
Divorce is messy.
So the district wide, if somebody from Charlestown votes yes, it's voting for Langdon and Walpole potentially to have an extra appropriation. If they vote no, it could be everybody pays for it, or nobody does, because it doesn't pass at all.
Yes, I can see the logic in there.
So Langdon voters saying no, they don't want to pay for this extra thing, but they wanted to go through divorce proceedings and not pay for it. And the Charlestown voters can say, no, that's not how it works, you gotta pay for it yourself. So I'm comfortable with the way the article is currently written. I think it, um, I let, what happens at deliberative happened, and we're not married to it, it doesn't matter if it changes or not, so. I'm comfortable with the way it's written.
Yeah, and we know from experience that if, no matter what, we still have to do this stuff. And so, um, if this doesn't pass, then, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do the same game as we, we'll play the same game as we played before. So, it's hard.
And it's cumbersome on.
Very cumbersome. Yeah.
Yes, Jamie.
You're the school board who's in charge of a thirty-six million dollar budget. If that goes to zero and it doesn't pass, and they still want, and their warrants pass, the school board can move fifty thousand dollars out of any single budgeted line and make any other decision that they need to make to finance another group to come in and take care of that. There's no reason that we cannot follow through on what we're trying to do in order to allow our administration to get, to catch their breath.
Yeah.
Okay, if both or one of those articles pass.
And not only that, we do actually want a complete and full, non-partisan study done. Not that I think anybody on this board or any select board, as would this committee be made up of, whatever, you know, skew it one way or the other, but to have a non-partisan.
I mean, at the end of the day, you can still affect what you want to do. At that point, the whole dis, all the districts would be paying for it, and that's just the decision that the board will have to make at that point.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deb, yes, please.
I'm sorry. I, I totally agree with, with the board is saying. And I, and I, we really need to be supportive of the business administrator. As we go through this and documents are needed and so forth, we, we want to be able to be nimble, to supply them with what they need, and, and do it in a way that, well, I know Lori is, is not, is not biased and so forth. We don't, we don't even want to give the impression by giving a document that, that something is not right. We need, we need fresh eyes. So I appreciate the discussion the board is having. I, I think it's critical that we do hire somebody who, who can come at this and provide the documents that towns need as quickly as possible. Thanks.
Think a motion to approve article ten as written?
Approve it.
I'll approve.
Approve it, okay. Do I have a second?
Did we not already have proven?
Did, we haven't gone through.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, it is new, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry for that.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Um, we haven't, like, sat there and put our, the school board approves this by.
No, 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 prove us, it'll go longer. Take a longer.
Correct.
To be more realistic. To be just something to be heard.
The, the wording on, on, because this, this doc, the document that I'm looking at shows all of the articles, one through ten. And the only thing I would say is on Article nine, there's no information about Article nine, where all the other ones have information about Article, like, for example, Article eight says, after you, after you read it, you know, the district appropriate ten thousand dollars. And then they say information on more than Article eight. This article is fund capital projects for Fall Mountain Regional High School, stuff like that. For Article nine, shall the district appropriate two hundred and fifty K to put in capital reserve funds? There's no information on Article nine. It's just got a space there. Well, I guess Misty just put that in.
Yeah. Just added.
Yeah, just now. There wasn't anything there. That's what I was trying to say. Well, Misty beat me through.
All right, or add something to that. Thank you. All right. We move to our superintendents report. Deb, you have a thought.
Uh, good evening again, everyone. I, I don't wanna rehash what, what I've already submitted, so just briefly. Especially over the holidays, I appreciate Alyssa's work as well as some of the other board members on some of the really things that are pressing. Uh, having discussions, especially about the Articles of Agreement. And we're going to do a presentation on that at the, at the next board meeting. We worked on the superintendent's search with some input from board members, which you'll see tonight. Uh, I also appreciate that Bill Nicky and his department have been working very hard and we've hired, I believe it's a Spanish teacher, and Bill, can you, can you add to that two other, one or two other important positions?
I'm a part-time Spanish teacher who's already started with us. Um, Friday, last Friday was a big day. We had two teacher hires on ESL. Teacher, we still have an ESL teacher opening, um, but we hired ESL teacher, and we hired a special ed teacher for the high school, um, within an hour of each other, I think. So they both start in two weeks.
So there's been, there's been a lot of work behind the scenes, and you're going to see that uh, come to fruition and come, come to you for uh, input and approval in, in meetings and in the very near future. Thanks.
Hi, Deb, Kevin. In a couple of the administrators' reports, they, they touched on the new curriculum.
Yes.
I'd, I'd see in the future, a, one of our board meetings, um, presentation about the new curriculum, how it's working, maybe some teachers could come in and talk about how it's working in the classroom. Doesn't have to be all rainbows and unithorns. It can be some of the stuff that's going on that we need to work on. But I'd like to know, we spent a lot of money on that, I'd like to know how it's going.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think I mentioned in my report, we've been holding grade level meetings with teachers uh, so that they can give their input, tell us what's working, what's not working, and making adjustments uh, as the year moves forward. Those have, have been ve- very good meetings. I think it's important that we get input from all of the district's teachers on their, at their grade level, and having, bringing them together and having them the opportunity to uh, talk with each other about the curriculum has, has been very advantageous. So yes, we're happy to do that um, at a future board meeting. Thanks.
No, that just makes my, makes me so happy because that was one of the reasons we went to curriculum is that so teachers could share this information among each other. So I'm very happy that's actually happening, and I'd love to hear more about it.
All right.
Any other questions or concerns for Deb or Sean? Sorry about that.
Report, is it in, right?
Yeah, it's in the folder. It is the.
Is it in the admin report folder?
No.
Oh, okay, it's in the other one.
Yeah, regular folder.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
All right. Move on to the financial report, please. Actually, we need to do the financial statement first.
So, I presented a financial statement. It was in the, it's attached to the agenda. There isn't really anything exciting. I will say that, you know, as we all know, um, have discussed on numerous occasions over the last two or three months, the TOE twenty-five was the link what and which impacted tax rating, tax setting process. And, um, so I had extended to each of the towns, um, the, um, just, I let them know that we could work with them for December payments. Um, so you'll see in the statement that we didn't receive any December payments, but that was to be expected. Um, I will say that I think we only have one outstanding December payment as of today, so. That, you know, that's, that'll be reflected on next month's financial. I don't have anything like groundbreaking to share, so if you have questions, I can answer them.
So I heard that because Langdon, Sarah Porter hired a new teacher who was in a different grade than the previous teacher that based on their covered expenses, that they're looking at running on deficit in the, in their direct expenses?
Um, that would, that would make sense. I would have to go back and look at that. That would, that would make sense, because we budget based on snapshot and time and the people that are in the positions. So, um, we hired somebody who was at a different rate, um, different health insurance as well, so.
So, if at the end of the school year, we had a surplus and we decided to return that money to the district, would that take into account that that money reduced to Red Langdon to cover their debt first? No, just a general pool?
It's, it's, yeah, it's running.
Part of the reason why probably all, all Langdon wanna divorce.
But it does serve every town of random.
Absolutely, because.
Be cooperative, protect yourself from those moments.
What insulates, because when they first started putting together, part of the conversation was about if, you know, if an out-of-district special ed child comes in and it's, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars, which we had before, you know, it would, it could bankrupt a small town. So we pooled our resources, and that's what cooperatives are all about.
So I would like, maybe in our next meeting or some future meeting, to have that number. So when we start talking, um, about the benefits of a cooperative, we can start talking numbers.
That would be an excellent thing to have for our workshop coming up, when we will be discussing your options that we've got.
Um, I know you're asking specifically about Langdon, but I would presume that I need to do this type of a report, or sorry, this type of report by area.
I think so, consolidate it.
Well, and I mean, Alsted area would be.
Yes, yeah, I'd consol, I'd consolidate.
So instructional support code regular?
Consolidate Charleston and Walpole, yeah, and then break out Alsted, Acworth, and Langdon, so you can see the directs.
Right.
Yeah, maybe on the quarter. So like, at the quarter. Not necessarily nine thirty, but like at twelve thirty-one and then three thirty-one.
So would have been good to have here.
Yeah.
Yeah, to it. So quarterly, um, area report. And then by area, I do mean community.
By town.
Yeah.
And high school.
Yeah, and high school, high school separate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just ask what the red is?
Oh, it's just, it's a, it's a cheat, and so, because it's a, a negative number. It just shows up as red, just to kind of highlight it and emphasize. So we have one, this, what, what we're seeing here is in the financial services, we had a change of benefits, um, when we changed, when we hired a new person. And what that's done is put us into a deficit for the finance service line.
Election change.
Yeah. So hopefully we don't, you know, have any one of those now.
That's the hard crystal ball that you don't have when you have to try to set benefits nine months in advance.
Yeah.
So with that, with every other move, we've seen where it comes from. Do you know where that appropriation came from? Was it from that same line or a different?
In its area, I'm sorry.
No, it's the, it's the financial, so it would be, what's financing?
Twenty-five ten.
Yeah, but it's SAU, right?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a zero, zero one.
There's a.
So it's a component then.
It will be.
It will. Where are we drawing that from?
It'll come from whatever other surplus lies in O O one to cover it.
We don't need, or we're not, we're not far enough along in that to the years for me to start.
Sometimes you just let them go over instead of moving, so that way when you go into the next budget year, you know where you have to move start.
All right. Um, so I also presented some budget transfers. And so, Brenda's taking us there, so, uh, okay. So I have three transfers on this list, so I'm going to focus on one and two, and three is really, because I wanted to put all my transfers together on one document, and we can discuss it further later, um, in the meeting. Uh, but my, my transfer number one is that, if you recall, we converted our boiler at Walpole Elementary uh, from, excuse me, from heating oil to propane, so it had budgeted for heating oil, so I just wanna transfer that budget over to propane, um, but it's, it's ten thousand dollars, and I think our policy threshold was up to ten, so I wanted to make sure I put that out there uh, for board approval before I do it. Um, item number two was to transfer funds to cover the carrying costs for North Charleston. We've talked about it as a group, and the board had decided that, yes, we wanted to carry those costs, and I think that I think it was suggested through March. Um, so we projected through April, um, this is what we would need to, so we've incurred some of these costs already, but I'd like to transfer money. Um, this requires your approval, um, for a couple of reasons. Um, the health insurance from the maintenance, um, and that's associated with the painter position that we've eliminated and was worried about gonna be filling. Um, so I wanted to move money from that budget into these other facility type expenses. But those are being charged right now, and because we wanna separately identify them as North Charleston, um, that's where they are, they reside, and so I wanna move the budget from, uh, maintenance to cover that. Um, so after I prepared this, I get to thinking though, that, oh, we don't really want Charleston to be picking up those costs, if you will, so. At some point, I'm gonna need to move back into, I think, maintenance, so it's more of a district, um, cost, um, covering it. But I wanna keep it right now in North Charleston because it's, um, an easy identifier, if you will. It's not gonna get lost in other activity. Uh, so that's why I'm, uh, requesting that transfer, and then um, the, the last transfer is, um, to cover the high school sewer line rehabilitation. We have a quote in here, and Bill's here to talk to you about that. It came up at, um, I don't think our last meeting, but a, a couple of meetings ago. Um, there was an issue that had come up, and he was gonna be doing some scoping and, you know, and during the break. And so, um, he has more information, and we have a quote to discuss. And to cover the co, uh, to cover the costs, we would need to do a transfer, and so I'm requesting a transfer from, again, the maintenance, the painter pool to the high school to cover the cost of those expenses. Uh, but I, I'm gonna need a vote at some point in time on all of this. I don't know if you wanna do everything at once later in the meeting. If you've got any questions.
I'm I'm having a hard time. No problem with the first one, no problem with the third. Third one goes from district funded with a formula to district funded with a formula. I understand why you would think districts should cover a North Charleston cost, because the buildings closed and the board made the decision to carry it. But I don't know that it's appropriate to take monies from a district shared line and put it to a Charleston-only building. So I'm almost inclined to say, let those run deficit and see if Charleston's bottom line covers it at the end of the year. And then if it doesn't, we look at transfer. I'm, I'm just thinking through some of the conversations that have brought some of the problems bubbling up from different areas about monies that have formulas associated with them, and then monies that are direct. And I get why you thought that, because we chose to say we've carried the cost of that building. But at the end of the day, it, it was a North Charleston asset. So I, so I'm almost inclined to say, let it run. Pay the bills, let it run in deficit. We know it's gonna run to deficit because it wasn't budgeted for, right? But I don't feel comfortable taking it from an O O three line that has a formula associated with it. If that makes any sense.
My question would be, this used to be a North Charleston building at the.
My, I like your suggestion a lot, just let it go with the deficit. Um, but maybe instead of at, at the end, it's just part of the calculation of the surplus, and the surplus still just goes back to the way the surplus works. We don't even bother with trying to reconcile
Because then it would come out of any surplus coming off of O O three anyway. And you're not transferring.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, in the end.
The surplus is surplus.
Surplus is surplus, right? And we know that Charleston, because of their numbers, their size, right? Shares in the largest amount of surplus when it goes back. So, I would just let it ride and not transfer. We can always transfer later.
Oh, no, I, I would like to see that direct, um, relationship in the MS twenty-two. Is that the document you were just, MS twenty-seven? Is there progressions? Yes. Because I, I, it's still not clear to me how the percentages go back, so. Thought it was, but then I was, yeah, and then I was looking at them, and it's not, so I would like to look at that in another moment. So, more the conversation at hand, I understand where you're at, and I'm, yeah.
I'm good with one and three. I would hold on two.
One question about three. How is the sewer line rehabilitation different than Article seven, which is the replace the inlet inlet to the septic tank?
Do you want to make a motion to move that as part of the agenda, so we have the discussion of what was?
Sure.
Okay. So, whatever.
All in favor? Thank you. Do you want to give us a little background on the?
I'm gonna turn it over to, to Bill.
Give us later in the agenda and.
It's under, it's under new business, and so we could just. Hi, Bill.
The answer to your first question was, the, the one, the inlet pipe for the septic tank is outside. Let's see, pipe going into the tank and brought it out in the tank. And this is in the hallway from the woodshop to the main office. This, the one where the quote from Raoul, that's a difference. There is, uh, the four-inch sewer pipe that runs from the bathrooms outside of the woodshop to the office has a couple of dips in it. Ground has settled, and there's dips, so water stays there all the time. This epoxy line, epoxy base line, is a good product and in the right. is a good product and in the right situation, uh, it works very well. I don't know if it'll work well here. And I'm working with another, um, with a local contractor on trying to find another method. This is roughly thirty eight thousand dollars by the time we fix the floor. You could go have to look in tile down and, um, I he's had experience with it not working at another building. And they came back and tried it again. And it didn't work a second time, so they had to replace all the pipes. I don't want to put thirty eight thousand dollars into this and find out two or three years that we're going to dig up the hallway and replace the pipe anyways. So what I would like to do is if we could, um, wait two weeks because we're going to have to wait till either April vacation or the summer to do this project. So we have a little bit of time. Uh, I've scheduled a contract that I committed with a camera on Montwood, Quebec, when no one will be in the building. So no water will be flowing and we can lock out by the foot exactly what is going on in each foot of the pipe and find out if we can just replace the pipe from the hallway in front of the woodshop to just before the lobby. What I don't want to do is cut up that lobby floor, um, and replace a pipeline. You'll never, you'll replace that floor unless you do the whole thing. And then you're talking big money. Uh, what I'm hoping to do is, uh, after we go through, get an estimate for him to dig up just that one hallway and replace the pipe there if we can get away with that. And see if it can be less or, um, around the same. But I just, I just don't want to put this in because what happened there with this other building was they put their epoxy base liner in and it fills up the whole branches coming into it. And then they go back and cut them. And then what happens is paper gets caught on the rough edges of the cutter and plugs up. You know, instead of five bathrooms, you, you own pipe with one bathroom, plug them at a time. So, you know, I, I don't want to do that. I want to, I want to take a little more time, um, and research it a little more and, um, get it right the first time, but we only do it once.
Or it sounds like we're tabling this.
Sounds like that's a good way to go. I will tell the board that I did a little research on this and, um, you know, certainly appreciate the people I work with. And as I was kind of asking questions, Jeremy, take here specifically mentioned slip lining. I was like, what is that? And then he went on to describe exactly what this process is. So, um, the experience his company has had with it has been incredibly successful. And so I was feeling quite confident this was a good plan, but I'm certainly open to additional options.
Yeah. I, I, I was, um, hoping to say that. Uh, and this first, the contractor I was talking with said, this is a very good product. And in the right situation, it works great. And it will still have our dips. And we're still going to have water quality there. So it'll, it'll work. It may give us a couple of, you know, years. Now, I just don't want to dig it. I don't want to have to dig it up later on.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much. I noticed that they said, um, something about that if there's an asbestos that has to be taken care of. Are those, are those, are those tiles asbestos tiles?
No.
No, okay.
There's no asbestos.
We taste the winds when we get them. Yeah.
The only thing I worry about is when you cut the floor with a wrapping conduit, you're going to cut off.
Right, because they also were talking about like the communication lines and the utility lines and all of that. And so the locators are a lot better today than they were ten years ago.
Yes, they are. We do have a locator.
So. Does anybody have any other questions? I don't think we need a motion. Are we going to take it alone?
Yeah, just table this.
Uh, when are you thinking we bring that back to us?
I would like to come back the next, the next meeting with a quote with this updated quote from them and a quote from, um, a contractor to just replace it from the, from the woodshop to the lobby.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. So with that information, we go back to the trans, budget transfers.
I think we only need to do one at this point.
Yep.
Right, just number one.
Just number one.
So we make a motion that we oh, transfer the money from oil to propane.
Yeah, oil from, oil to propane because.
Yeah.
That's what they're, they replace the oil burner with a propane burner. I think that's a wise thing to do.
We have a second, Colonel Cannon. Is there any other discussion about this? Any other questions or concerns regarding, um, the North Charleston preparation? All right, on favor.
All right.
Thank you.
Was that the dual fuel burning? The dual, the Waffle and Van Two, was that one of the dual fuel boilers?
Yeah, there's pellets and now.
All right. I want your energy. Any questions or concerns? Um, I had a question. When it's a transfer, what does that mean? And the personnel that, um, are, and are employees and transferred to the position that you see there. Oh, from another position, from another position. Okay. On favor.
All right.
All right. Well, that would invite Mr. Meek to discuss his.
Evening, everybody. Um, for those of us who don't know, my name is Richard Meek and I'm a socialized teacher at Violets Middle School. Um, and I'm also now the resident. I don't know if that matters, but.
We appreciate you, Brendan.
I do too, yeah. Um, so we are fresh off the heels of the American Heritage Tour that traveled back in November. And we have a proposition to start something known as the New England Heritage Tour. Now, this would be our fourth year of doing historical travels at Violets Middle School. And this particular trip is a three day trip to the area in and around the city of Boston. Now, I do have to apologize, the trip is not as far along as it was when I presented back in June because there's procedures that we're trying to follow, uh, and understandably so because now these trips are school sponsored. So I have handouts if you'd like to have one. And it kind of shows you a little rundown of what we are hoping to accomplish within those three days. I, I didn't know how many people were going to be here.
I'm not like that.
Now, the dates that we have scheduled are going to be November fifth to November seventh, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
And that is basically Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. What we are doing is basically doing exactly what we did two years ago when we did this trip. Um, and we're just trying to modify the, the experience to a more convenient time for the staff who are traveling with us. Because we used to do it on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then we'd come back to school on a Monday. And it, to be quite frank, is rough. So we are shifting it so it's now because it's school sponsored and kids won't get dinged for their attendance. We can do it on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and they have the weekend to recover. And that also gives us the week of Veterans Day to have a lighter week when we return. So we're trying to not impact the attendance as we return back to school, uh, uh, normality. Now, the trip starts and, uh, on that Wednesday, we're going to be heading down to Boston. We're going to be doing a lot of the Freedom Trail that first day. Uh, try to hit as many venues as possible along that tra- uh, travel route. We'll be also going to historical places such as Boston Tea Party Museum, which does have actually a pretty FDP to go in where kids can actually throw tea into the harbor, which is a lot of fun.
That's still legal.
Uh, well, they're, they're reproductions of the boxes. The chest used to be about four hundred pounds a piece. So these are a little bit more styrofoamy, but it gives the kids really good, um, be quite frank, they actually whipped the kids into a frenzy, kind of what happened in the South Meeting House. Before they charge down the gangway onto the recreation of three ships. They have two on display, uh, the Dartmouth and the Eleanor. Uh, they're trying to get a third one, but that's wait in the future. So that is one of the paying venues that we have to go to. Now, this itinerary is very, very rough. The gentleman I was working with, uh, is currently getting back from a eight week paternity. Uh, his wife just gave birth, so he should be back Wednesday. And there's a couple of things I want to add to this before I get this out to parents with your permission. Um, we also are going to be hitting up, uh, Lexington and Concord on the way north on our last day. That will be at Friday night. Uh, we'll also be doing, uh, Charleston, going to the USS Constitution, possibly Caston Young, depending. Because the Caston Young actually costs money to board that ship. I don't know if we can swing that with the, uh, the monetary, the monetary amount that we have. But in total, for those three days, it will cover all of their travel expenses, all of their hotel needs, all the ticket venues, and also all food. So a kid can literally get on that bus after paying the cost of this trip and not have a single dime in their pocket and be completely covered for that weekend. Um, another big draw is we actually get to take the kids to Fenway Park and they get a really, uh, a closer personal view of that ballpark. Um, and it's very, it pulls a lot of students in who not, might not be so historically minded or interested. But Fenway really draws them in. And so as total, we have a cost for, I'm going to be pitching it to parents at about eight hundred and fifty one dollars a student, um, which is a lot less than the, the bids that I've received from other companies, especially the price that we got two years ago. Two years ago, we did this very same trip and it cost over a thousand dollars a kid. So with our, I don't want to say loyalty, but with getting bids from other companies and showing them that we are interested in traveling every single year, the price does drop for our students. Uh, which is why we have that very somewhat reasonable price.
So that's the hundred dollar.
No, that's to hold their position. They can, they can actually get their name on the trip register for a fifty dollar down payment and then they can start paying it off, depending on financial aid. If you're looking at the back price.
It shows a hundred dollar scholarship. So is that what you were talking about by going with them? It says price reflects savings of a hundred dollar scholarship.
Uh, no, the price has dropped because we have, uh, the relationship I have with the company over the last three years using them. That is what I can use to help negotiate that price lower. That scholarship has nothing to do with it. But we actually do have a student credit that we can give five, which also influenced my opinion of using their bid rather than other companies. Because we didn't take as many chaperones as we could have last year. We only took four, myself included. We were able to take six and the cost of covering those two.
Credit.
Yes. But that, that scholarship is something different. The price is also reflective if we take forty five students. The two grades that we're taking at Violets are the sixth and the seventh, which is going to be next year, seventh and eighth. That is a total of about fifty students. In reality, we could probably take about maybe fifty percent of that. If we reach out for other agencies to help us pay for the cost. The more students that travel, the lower the price gets for every single student at Violets. And that's kind of what my next step is. First, get permission from you ladies and gentlemen, and then reach out to other organizations that they've been in the past uh, to see if we can get some more scholarship funds to those students. But all in all, those are those three days. We'll be staying in one hotel outside the city to drop costs as much as possible. We'll also be traveling to venues outside of Boston like, um, it's no longer called Plymouth Plantations, it's called the Puxit, which is the recreation of the Pilgrim Village and the, um, the, the Wampanoag Village as well. And that also gets us a tour on the Mayflower, uh, the Mayflower too. So we're trying to jam in as much as we can into this trip as possible in those three days, just like what HHT was like. And the good part is about fifty percent of the kids who are going to be traveling on it are veterans from my trip from just last November. So they know exactly what's expected with behavior, how fast we move, and what's expected for their presentations when we get there. So that's it in a nutshell. I can't tell you how many students we have yet because I haven't pitched it to the families. I know there's a lot of interest with the students who have traveled in the past, students who are in the sixth grade who saw us travel this year and want to go. And every time I go to the transfer station, parents are asking when the trip is going to be. Because they've gotten used to this rhythm of every January, a new trip is pitched to their kids. So they want to know when we're starting and I had to talk to you ladies and gentlemen first. I also can't tell you what chaperones are going yet because it all is dependent on how many kids we take. Uh, the more kids we get, the more free chaperone spots we can have and.
More importantly, though, more importantly, it's the student to teacher ratio.
Yes. Yeah, we, we try to squeeze it so that it's ten kids per adult that we take. So.
And the policy or?
It's, it's a policy, but it's also recommended from the company that we're using.
Yeah, I would do it higher than that.
Exactly. Um, so last year we had thirty seven students. We had four staff members go. Um, the trip that we did, this exact trip two years ago, it was just twenty two kids, so it was Missy, Billy and myself. And luckily I have staff members who are willing to keep going with me, so they're gluttons for punishment as well. And we have support from our administration, which is very helpful, given on that one. Because the benefit of this trip is monumental. The, the true reality of what we cover in my classroom and how we can tailor our trips to be something that we actually do talk about in my classroom is, is important. So I'm not talking a mile a minute as I have a tendency of doing. Are there any questions or?
I would just make one suggestion, just from a liability standpoint hat. I think I wouldn't take any less than three chaperones because in an emergent situation, if one is dealing with one child who has an emergency and we need one with twenty kids, that's difficult.
I understand that completely.
Yeah, so I would not ever take less than three.
The idea was floated that instead of me being a chaperone, I was the bus coordinator, like I was for the YMCA.
So you had three bodies there.
Yeah, so the idea would be that I would be in charge of the entire tour while other staff members would be in fucking charge of the students. But, um, I understand what you're saying from that perspective.
Just because, you know, in situations like that before, it can be difficult giving twenty one kids to one person. It's like raining in cats.
Especially when you have the, the difficulties in the city that you're dealing with.
No, sounds exciting. Uh, my, and my only other concern is to make sure that we have with Kevin, um, that we have some kind of uh, figure out some way that if anybody has, uh, financial challenges, that we can afford them the ability to go.
We have, I mean, for the, I didn't speak for this yet because I haven't done the, the legwork yet. But last year we reached out to a multitude of, um, agencies to help the students and families get on this trip. And the reason we were able to take about seventy five percent of the eligible students last year is because we did that extra legwork. So that's the next step.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I don't want any child left behind.
That's the goal. Um, we had a lot of students whose families chose not to have them go.
Which is their choice.
But, but, but also American Heritage Tour is totally a different trip because it's nine states away from where we live. And traveling in nine states away for a six day trip, that's, that's a huge ask for a lot of families. So, or five day trips, excuse me.
I see. Do you need a motion? I'll make a motion.
I have a more question.
Yeah.
I just wonder if there's any opportunity to draw the three areas together for like this.
That is, to be quite frank, that is a full-time job. That is a job where it is trying to orchestrate three different towns and lots of different angles and aspects. Just juggling the, the project itself is a Herculean task. When there's no time besides personal time to take care of that. And I have to say frankly, that the chaperones that I bring with me, the staff members from Violets feel comfortable handling Violets students. Asking us, which is causing, which caused conflict last year, to take students from other schools, that was a huge ask, which is why we said no. I'm not opposed to traveling with the other two schools. How, because I traveled years ago, I started my career, um, early on, working with the YMCA, doing these exact same trips. But that is when the YMCA ran it, where they had professionals who were paid for their time. And they had the representation of the YMCA and they organized the entire trip. They orchestrated hotels. They did all the legwork and all I had to do was staff members go. They did all the legwork and all I had to do was staff members go. And we also had meetings outside of the school day where we met at the three different schools and we rotated. I mean. It it was a lot. And asking staff members to do that with nothing set up for it, no time, no planning. No leadership. It is very, very difficult. I know I can handle it and the trips have been running well for going on four years now. Because I can trust staff that I have and the communities that I'm a part of. But I think it might be best if the communities who want these trips start them themselves. With the staff that they have and see if it starts working. Now, I'm not trying to knock staff members who don't go because we have lives outside the classroom. We have our own children. We have our own secondary careers. Um but if they can get these trips running themselves, maybe there can be a conversation of combining them with people who are willing. So it would be good that they came back together. But I think maybe standing on our own first and then com- combining them would be a better bet.
So listening to the conversation, then perhaps the upper administration at the eighteen level could have some conversations. Whereby you don't necessarily take charge of it, right? But the knowledge that you have and the and the. Um connections that you have, right, with this type of firm, right, could be shared with folks at the other locations. Um so that, you know, so.
If I'm not mistaken, isn't there a trip planned for March for the American Heritage Tour?
There is through using the same.
Oh, it is? Okay.
And that's a joint Wallpole and Trump's house, that's sure.
Oh, so go, okay.
So it's already starting.
It's starting, yeah. Just different. They might be in different timeframes in there. What are, what grades are they taking? What grades?
Currently, it's the Washington.
That's what?
The other one's the Washington.
Okay.
So currently, just the great, I I love the idea that you have um. Alternating years so that they get one trip every year. Um the subcommittee go together to Boston and then they, the next year.
Yeah, cuz you have children who are, they're crazy, right, you know.
They know what to expect.
Exactly.
But it also is to to balance our numbers.
Sure, yeah. Well, and they get, they'll experience both sites, right, at different. Timeframes.
If a student goes through Vialis for two years, then they can experience both trips.
Yeah, yeah. Doesn't matter which order, either you're in Washington as a seventh grader or in, yeah, Boston as an eighth or the other way around.
As long as they get to travel or have the opportunity to travel.
Right.
That's the goal here at Vialis.
Did you start, have you been emotional?
I did.
Okay. So I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion now of emotion?
I think it's a great idea. I just, I like, yeah.
I appreciate the effort that you put into it every time. So it's awesome.
I'm just glad I have the support. It's a lot easier to go on these trips if I know that there's gonna be people that are willing to go with me because, like you said before, can't do everything.
Yeah. I think it would be a a good thing for the um, yes. I think it would be a good thing for the administration to to discuss um. Having some kind of a, even even if it was like a committee that was within school time where you were, where people were getting, you know, had some, had some time to be able to collaborate in terms of what was happening. Um on these kinds of trips and and it would, I'm not taking away from, you know, wanting to say, stop your trip. But um I think what you're doing is great. Um but I I think that the idea of having, of having those kinds of experiences being available to everybody and um it is is. That there's value to that. And so, but I also completely agree with you that, you know, for you all to take students without others, without. Without chaperones from the other schools coming along. Which makes, then makes it a bigger group, which then makes it adds on to, it changes the whole experience to make it bigger.
Does. If we argue that smaller class sizes are more effective for students.
Right.
Same could be said for for tours such as this.
Absolutely, absolutely. I and um I I totally agree. So, you know, I think, I just, I think, I think it's something that might, it might make sense to have like a committee that 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 talks about. How those are coordinated amongst all the different, all the different attendance areas. So that um so that other attendance areas are aware of what you're doing. You could give, you could, you have a wealth of information and 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 valuable experience. That could be shared with other people that were trying to start, trying to keep going with the same kinds of things. And you might, you might be able to to glean more information from other, from other folks who have done other things. So I think it would be, it definitely would be a valuable discussion amongst the administration. To talk about how we can make this so that it's not more work on you, but it can be a collaboration amongst the whole district.
So um I I already, I already listed it as a as something that we'll discuss. When we have a uh principal's meeting. So we'll discuss that and um come back to the board with some. Information about that at a later date.
It it should also be mentioned that there is something to be said about trips that are exclusive to those schools. My students who have traveled have that bond, have that connection within themselves. And share that common experience together, which makes, I would argue, Vialis a much stronger community. So whatever the board decides to do to try to get a a district trip off the ground, I don't want that to be ignored that. Our trips have been working flawlessly, not, I wouldn't say flawlessly, but very well for the past three years now, going on hopefully a fourth trip. And I I would be very hesitant to sacrifice what we have done. If it was not planned well.
And and Rich, I hear what you're saying. I think the board does as well. I think, I think what I'm hearing is the board would just like to see something similar offered at each of the um schools. So um we'll have that discussion. I I hear you loud and clear about still keeping each school separate. I think we can do that, but at the same time, we can um. Uh offer it so Walpole kids can go together on a similar trip. Charlestown kids can go on a similar trip. So I think we all hear you and we really appreciate what you've done.
Well, it's a lot of fun and I'll keep doing this as long as I'm able. Um, yeah, I think so.
All right, how's the board vote?
All right.
Oh, hi. Fantastic.
Thank you very, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your efforts.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? Oh, man, I forgot. Alright, the superintendent's search process, there was a letter in the package regarding. How a subcommittee, a recommendation came to move forward. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at that note to?
I know, I just can't refine. I have it printed, you wanna? Not adept. I I read it once. I read it, yeah, I'm gonna drive back.
So Kevin.
So I have just a question, because one thing that's kind of missing is we talked about in that whole subcommittee. Is that um posting this positioning with um the caveat that internal candidates will be given preference and that's nowhere in this letter. So in in this document. So I wondered if we were um. I didn't s- see that.
No, but it's that's here. It's the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down.
One, two, three, fourth paragraph down.
Priority will be given to qualified internal candidates.
Alright, so I was expecting it to be, uh, we're talking about posting it.
Last one.
But there's always work making sure that's um part of it, our posting.
So to the wording in the posting itself.
Yes. I need support. People know that we're gonna be doing that. Might lower your pool, but yeah.
Will also make people think about whether their qualification meet it, whether they really wanna work in this community, when they see them, maybe looking at them. If they put a resume together and submit it, then they may very much wanna come here. That's worth looking at.
People posting it on January twenty-second, are we using the posting that we made last time? Basically?
It's basically the same wording because it's um the job description for a superintendent is changed. Hasn't changed, I don't, no, it's essentially an R S A-driven job description. And so we have what we will be looking for, which we will come together in between the posting date and when. HR are they able to vet those candidates presented to us. We'll come together and decide what we are looking for in a leader and. Talk to other people in our district, get their feedback, that kind of thing to create a provision of what we want here.
This is just for us to approve of letting the public know what's going on.
Absolutely, yeah. And lay out a basic timeline for us to be aware of.
And I think one important difference from last time, our last search, and this search is last search, we used a search firm. And we had, and the search committee was made, was a large search committee made up of the community. Um and a large reason for that was that we needed more information. To to kind of create the the job for our community. Um and getting all that out, external input was important, that part of the process. And we don't, we don't, we just did that a year ago or two years ago, however long ago, not that long. We don't need that. We don't need that level of uh handholding anymore. Um and that, so this, the review committee will be made up primarily of just the board members. That, this juncture, it could always change after we don't agree with that, but that's, that was the direction that we came out of from our little subcommittee.
With the discussion that we were going to um be willing to take comment or question from any number of stakeholders, any number of individuals. Within the district. And take those into account as we were discussing the candidate.
Yeah, I think it's very important that we, that we um, I think it's important for for the uh. For the full community to feel as if they're able to give some input in terms of um. The potential, the the candidates as they come forward, some input in terms of. Yes, this, you know, these are, these are, these are things that are great. These are things that we are concerned or questions about, those kinds of things, um so that we get that that feedback. So, absolutely.
One of the things we talked about was timing. Uh trying to do the the interview process right around the same time as the March election. So that the new board members could be involved, as well as trying to ask the current then board members who are stepping down, also be involved in that process. So we have um. Some people who have got to work with this person getting a say, but also people who um know the district and know the job. From your years of service on this board and in the school district, um you could also provide influence to that process.
Who's that this year?
You, you.
Oh, three, right?
Oh.
I'm gone.
We got that, Joe.
I made that.
Much to my family's dismay. Yes, I will be running again.
Oh, good. Sounds good.
All right, are there any other questions about this sending the press release regarding our process? Are there any other questions about how we came to this?
No, I think it's well-written.
Yeah, I feel like, I I feel that, I know it was a long and cumbersome process that we went through before. Um but I feel that we did need, we did need to do that for the last time, but we, a- as Kevin said, we just did that and um. I always call it the Mary Poppins list, you know, we we wrote out all the things that would be, that we would want and then you throw it in the fire and it goes up and Mary Poppins comes. Well, Mary Poppins didn't exactly come, so. Um so um I think that we can uh throw out the fire again and see if Mary Poppins comes this time.
Or Mark Poppins or?
Or or Mr. Poppins, you know.
All right, then. Are you all willing to this forward?
So. Do we need a motion, a motion to the press or whatever, whatever you do with it?
Joe just in.
We'll second that.
Any other questions, concerns, thoughts? Uh Dan wants to weigh in on this as well?
No, I I I think you're exactly right. You've gone through this process recently. Uh I think putting this press release out will hopefully um open some doors for people to. Contact you or me and express their their opinion and that, that's always important. Uh having a date when it will close, I think um. Bill is very capable of of vetting uh applications. And just, I think, uh spending money for for a. For a firm to kind of do the same thing that you did just recently is is not really um. Necessary and I think we can still have really good results.
All right, all in favor? Perfect. Thank you very much. And I would also like to thank um Phil and especially Misty for the work they did on this. Uh just the letter and convincing all of the thoughts and ideas to something very succinct that we can send to the public so they're aware. Process.
So they adjust your margins, they'll fit on one page. Mine came out on two. Is it awesome? Always better.
Yeah, I agree. Um so if any of you get questions from the public, feel free to pass them on, consolidate them, see what trends are, if that's true. All right, now that we're through with this. Does anybody have anything we'd like to add at this time from the public or from our teaching or? Perfect. You saw the admin report. Is there anybody here who has questions or concerns, thoughts on any of those?
Going on?
Yeah. Don't appreciate them. We do read them. So if you appreciate the work you put into them.
Lot going on and it looks like this body's coming on board, so it's good. Yay.
They also take after the, I like the Friday update from the high school. It reminds me to do my update every week. There is, I gotta go do mine, so.
See, I have to move you. I do not see you through this post, ever. Yeah, like that.
No, but now I can't see her. I'll have to do that.
Yeah, there's ours.
She's hiding.
Your, your, your rock. Yeah, while we're distracted. Um all right, fantastic. Did everybody have an opportunity to see the treasurer's report?
Yep, right here.
Make a motion to approve of the treasurer's report.
One second. All in favor?
All right.
Fantastic, thank you. And we did our non-much earlier today, so we have an additional one.
The motion we adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.